Let's pray. And then we will very briefly get back into Revelation. Because we got our next tangent on the board. Alright. Lord God, thank you. Thank you for this time to come together again. To study your word. To exercise our faith in you, our trust in you. You are good Father. In your plan of redemption, that you have brought about the recording of events, of how you have intervened in human history. How you have worked to save us. Even in the midst of our rebellion. That even even in the midst of our sin, you sent a Savior. Father, what's more is you've also given this vision to your servant John, that we could pour over it this last year. And I pray that this message that was to be carried out to seven fellowships, seven cities. That 2,000 years later, it still speaks to us. It encourages us. It brings focus to our hearts and minds, to the Spirit within us. That we can be challenged by it today, and I pray that your Spirit works in us to that end. Help us to keep our eyes fixed on Jesus, on our King. I pray that the study tonight will honor and glorify you. Will draw us deeper to the knowledge of who you are and how you work. How you work in our lives. You be glorified during this time. Pray all of this in Jesus's name. Amen. Alright, so as you can see on the board here, we're going to tackle Revelation 14:12 as this has come up for a second time. So as we have already spent three weeks addressing basically Hades, Sheol, the lake of fire, Gehenna, or Gehenna, concepts of hell, place of the dead. So we are going to move on from that. And mind you, that was addressing in verse 10. So I'm just going to start reading at verse nine in chapter 14. In case you forgot, we are in chapter 14. "Then another angel, a third one, followed them, saying with a loud voice, 'If anyone worships the beast in his image and receives a mark on his forehead or on his hand, he also will drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is mixed in full strength in the cup of his anger; and he will be tormented with fire and brimstone in the presence of the holy angels and in the presence of the Lamb; and the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever; they have no rest, day and night, those who worship the beast and his image, and whoever receives the mark of his name.'" Here is the perseverance of the saints, or some translations, holy ones, who keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. Alright, pause right there. And let's turn back to chapter 12. And so chapter 12, just a reminder, this is one of the interludes here. And we have the dragon, the male child, the angel Michael. There's a war in heaven. The serpent is cast down. Starting at verse 10, "Then I heard a loud voice in heaven, saying, 'Now the salvation and the power and the kingdom of our God and the authority of his Christ have come; for the accuser of our brethren has been thrown down, he who accuses them before our God, day and night; and they overcame him because of the blood of the Lamb and because of the word of their testimony; and they did not love their life, even when faced with death. For this reason rejoice, O heavens, and you who dwell in them; woe to the earth and the sea, because the devil has come down to you, having great wrath, knowing that he has only a short time.' And when the dragon saw that he was thrown down to the earth, he persecuted the woman who gave birth to the male child; but the two wings of the great eagle were given to the woman, so that she could fly into the wilderness, to her place, where she was nourished for a time, and times and half a time, from the presence of the serpent. And the serpent poured water like a river out of his mouth after the woman, so that he might cause her to be swept away with the flood; but the earth helped the woman, and the earth opened its mouth and drank up the river, which the dragon poured out of his mouth. So the dragon was enraged with the woman and went off to make war with the rest of her children, who keep the commandments of God and hold to the testimony of Jesus.'" And then it goes right into chapter 13, "And the dragon stood on the sand, on the sand of the seashore." And it goes into the beast from the sea, the beast from the earth. So remember, there wouldn't have been chapter divisions 2,000 years ago. Right? That didn't happen until about 900 years ago. So yeah. So we have these two places that it's come up. And even as we were reading before, Mounts even recognizes this as John bringing this back up in the midst of these interludes for the members of those churches in Asia Minor to be reminded of how they were to live, even in the midst of the threat of such persecution. And everybody remember the beast and how they're identified and what they're identified with, and even the 666 and loyalty to the imperial cult and Nero, all of those things, right? I'm going to say the G-word, government, right? So that's, that's, you know, basically the big bad guy in this. That is what John is pointing to. That is how the dragon carries so much authority and is able to do what he can do. Because at that time, it was the Roman Empire. You know, the big empire on the block at that time. There'd been a few battles. Parthia was kind of staying to the east in what is now modern-day Iran. Rome in the west, controlling all around the Mediterranean, extending all the way in to the British Isles, into Germany, extending down into Africa. So, I mean, yeah, Rome was pretty much untouchable at that time. It was kind of at its zenith. So but regardless of that, what John is putting forward is that these followers of Jesus were to hold to the commandments of God and their testimony in Jesus. Now, he doesn't say, "Be good Jews and live out all the traditions and everything else." And I think we've already established that within Asia Minor, these easily would have been Jewish and Gentile congregations. The whole point of the law of God or the commandments is to separate God's people from the world around them. And for any of you that have been in Sunday night seminar from the beginning, as we were moving through the Torah, what you see is a distinction of God calling out his people and giving them an identity. And so we see the law as a glimpse of his own character being extended to his people. That if you would live this way, people will recognize you as belonging to me. Because you'll be living differently than all of them as they live in devotion to their gods. You know, as they're sacrificing their babies. As they are taking each other's spouses, as they are murdering and robbing each other. So for all of that, it's important for us to understand when we talk about the commandments, what does that mean then and for us today? So if you will allow me to dive into this just a little bit, because at first, I was just going to avoid it. If nothing else, just for my own safety and because of my certain theological perspectives. And but then I was like, you know what? It's right there. And it's been brought up a couple of times. And it's worth diving into. Because because the church today in different pockets, it comes in waves, has really an anti-law bias. That we can't appreciate God's law, which I'm just going to tell you, it's the first five books of the Bible. So in like, we're talking out of both sides of our mouth where we're like, oh, it's bad, it's wrong. God, you know, God sent Jesus to come and do away with it. It's still the first five books of our Bible. But then at the same time, like as we are talking about God's law, it's having a healthy appreciation for it. But the church is really, and not just, not this church, but by and large evangelical Christianity has to kind of like brush it either under the rug or boot it out altogether. And for those who don't know what to do with it, they just don't talk about it. Or relegate it to just the 10 commandments, and that's it. Because that's the safe ones. We'll get to the Sabbath later. But really, like, it just opens up a host of issues because theologically, nobody knows what to do with it. So I have a couple of ideas. But I want to go to scripture and kind of unpack this in a little bit more detail. Because John thought it important enough, or even if you want to hold to this part being the actual vision from God, God telling John to communicate these things, to hold to those commandments and their testimony in Jesus. So now, before we dive into the deep end on this, before we jump out of the boat, our safety line, okay? So I'm going to anchor this in about four, three different ways. The first, what would Jesus do? We follow Jesus, right? Did Jesus break the laws? No. No, if he, if he would have, he would not have been the sinless, spotless lamb who is the perfect sacrifice to atone for our sins. So what would Jesus do? And even after the crucifixion, after the resurrection, does that give him license to break his father's laws? Of which he lived perfectly. I'm just going to avoid a whole theological conundrum and say, no, no, that, that doesn't work like that. Second thing. So God called a people and made them a kingdom, and he gave them rules to live by. Jesus is our King. We are in his kingdom, right? He came preaching the kingdom of heaven as a hand. We saw in Revelation 5, Jesus being made king. Right? He was the lamb who is worthy to open the scroll. So we are not living in anarchy. Nor are we our own kings who can make up our own rules. Has anybody ever thought about any of this before? Okay, there's just a lot of looks coming this way, not a lot of expression, and I'm just like trying to read the room. And it might as well be Braille. I'm just, so so, okay, alright, alright.
We're just curious where it's going.
Just curious where it's going. That's fair. So see, it's starting to get a little warm in here. So the third thing, the law is good. It's not from man. It's from God. Moses didn't make it up. Rabbi's didn't make it up. God gave it to Moses to give to his people. All of it. Not just the top 10 list. All of it. So the very definition of not living as the world. The law is the definition of being in the world and not of the world. So where do we begin? So oh, and the last one is remember that antonomian, so alright, we'll get into some words here. So commandments in Greek, antole. Law in Greek is nomos or nomenya. Okay? It is actually a heresy to be anti-law. And that's called antonomian. So we have Marcian to thank for that. Anybody remember Marcian from some of early discussions? So Marcian comes up in like 180's, I think. And he is around the Black Sea region. And he is definitely not from a Jewish background. He doesn't like the Old Testament and thinks it's a different God entirely. So he just cuts that out. But then the New Testament seemed a little too Jewish for him too. So he cuts out three of the Gospels, holds on to the Gospel of Luke, and Acts, and all of Paul's writings. Well, there was quickly a church council to decide, hey, what do we do about this guy? And they were like, oh, nope, he's a heretic. So that's what gets the discussions going on basically finalizing or canonizing the Bible. Because you just can't have people running around cutting parts of it out. So, so anti-law, antonomian. So that is a heresy. Being pro-nomenian, which is a term that's kind of gaining a little bit more popularity, is not a heresy. And where that line, where that line is, because what I'm not talking about here is earning your salvation. Okay? Is everybody tracking on that? Like John is writing to believers in a time of persecution and calling them to live for God. And they don't just have to make it up, like, how do I do this? God gave guidelines, instructions for how to do that. And hold to the testimony of Jesus. What he's not talking about there is so that you will be saved. Right? And anytime it's brought up in any of these verses, thank you Strong's Concordance, it doesn't say that you have to obey those, all of them perfectly, to be saved. We are saved by the atoning work of Jesus Christ. Amen? And that's what we hold to. The Israelites, even before, even while they were in Egypt, God didn't say, you have to obey all of these laws that I'm going to give you in a couple months perfectly, and then I'll bring you out of Egypt. Didn't do that. They just had their faith in the Passover lamb, right, to atone, to cover, to protect them. And then they could leave Egypt. And it wasn't for another few months before Sinai, and God gave the law to them. They were already saved from Egypt. The question then was, how do we function as the people of God? They were already saved. They were already identified as the people of God. The question was, how do they live as the people of God? And I think that's where it plays a role in our lives. And I think John thought the same. So how do the commandments of God, so what are they and what do they look like? So but first, just as we're going to see, how was this word, antole, or what's translated as commandment, how else is it used in the New Testament, right? This is us cross-referencing to make sure nothing is taken out of context. Is there by tracking? Does anybody have any questions so far? Guys didn't know you were running into this tonight. Absolutely. So this is a big, big part of the confusion is that you have God's command, and then the Pharisees added to it. Right? And really, that is what Paul is encountering in Galatians, even the whole matter going into Acts 15. So a lot of those things. So just remember, like, one of the definitions of a false prophet wasn't just proclaiming something was going to happen and it not happening. The definition of a false prophet was when it came true and everybody listened to that guy, and he's saying, hey, let's run after other gods. Or let's forsake God's commands. That is what made them a false prophet. So anybody that was diverting your attention from God or from obeying his word was a false prophet. And so that is what Jesus was rebuking the Pharisees for. Because instead of diverting their attention to other gods, honestly, they were making the power play, making themselves to be gods, controlling by patrolling the people and making sure they were obeying all of their rules, which were far from what God's command actually was. And it's worth noting that Deuteronomy 30, verses 11 through 14, "For this commandment that I command you today is not too hard for you; neither is it far off. It is not in heaven that you should say, 'Who will ascend to heaven for us and bring it to us, that we may hear it and do it?'" Neither is it beyond the sea that you should say, "'Who will go over the sea for us and bring it to us, that we may hear it and do it? But the word is very near you; it is in your mouth and in your heart, so that you can do it." Deuteronomy 4, verse 40, "Therefore you shall keep his statutes and his commandments, which I command you today, that it may go well with you and with your children after you, and that you may prolong your days in the land that the Lord your God is giving you for all time." Deuteronomy 5:29, "O that they had such a heart as this always, to fear me and to keep all my commandments, that it might go well with them and with their descendants forever." Moses talking to the Israelites, Deuteronomy, chapter 6, verse 24, "And the Lord commanded us to do all these statutes, to fear the Lord our God, for our good always, that he might preserve us alive, as we are this day." So continually we see that God's law is a blessing. But to Roy's point, it's all the rules that we create around that that becomes that burden. So alright, so back on track here. Commandments. Let's go to Matthew, chapter 5, starting at 17. "Do not think that I came to abolish the law or the prophets; I did not come to abolish, but to fulfill." Now, a lot of times, you might hear that word fulfill to be done, like it's been fulfilled, it has been accomplished, and now done away with. That's actually not what that word means. So it was explained by a professor that that word in Greek is used of a river overflowing its banks. It's also used of pouring water or liquid into a cup so that it's overflowing. The in, the contents of it is coming out, it's being revealed. Which makes sense because Jesus quickly goes into teaching, "You have heard that the ancients were told, 'You shall not commit murder; and whoever commits murder shall be liable to the court.'" Verse 22 there, "But I say, that could actually be moreover." Think of that as going deeper. Here I am bringing the internal, the contents, the heart, the motivation of it out for everybody to see and to experience. So it totally lines up. He's already, he's telling you what he's going to do, and then he immediately starts teaching through that. Getting into the heart of what it means to follow him, to follow God. So verse 17, "I did not come to abolish, but to fulfill." Another thing is, if he said he didn't come to abolish it, fulfill couldn't mean anything like abolish or get rid of it, right? So so it's not done away with. "For truly I say to you, until heaven and earth pass away, which won't be tomorrow, not the smallest letter or stroke shall pass from the law, until all is accomplished." So until heaven and earth pass away, which wasn't 2,000 years ago, it's not tomorrow. That is what we read of with the new heaven and new earth. Everybody connecting dots? That is what accomplished is referring to. Basically what we're reading at the end of this book. "Whoever then annuls one of the least of these commandments and teaches others to do the same, shall be called least in the kingdom of heaven; but whoever keeps and teaches them, he shall be called great in the kingdom of heaven." And then there's the next scary verse. "For I say to you that unless your righteousness surpasses that of the scribes and Pharisees, you will not enter the kingdom of heaven." So, but so here Jesus is walking his disciples, his audience through this. Because he's already drawing a line between him and the Pharisees. Even as a rabbi, he wouldn't have been dressed like the Pharisees. But here he is teaching with more authority than they do. So that word commandments there, antole, it's the same one that John uses in both chapter 14 and in chapter So that word, commandments there, antolae, it's the same one that John uses in both chapter 14 and in chapter 12. Any questions on that one? Is this interesting? Okay, all right. Matthew 15. These are always so good. I love these. "Then some of the Pharisees and scribes came to Jesus from Jerusalem and said, 'Why do your disciples break the tradition of the elders? For they do not wash their hands when they eat bread.'" So traditions of the elders, that's not the law. That's not God's commands. Okay? So it's important. So when you know God's law and you're reading through the New Testament and you come across this, you're like, that's nowhere in the first five books. You can totally separate that stuff out. "And he answered and said to them, 'Why do you yourselves transgress the commandment of God?' So he just upped it, right? For the sake of your tradition." Them's fighting words. Right? Because like, everybody knew that the traditions of the elders, like that was respected, that was revered, but it was not God's law. It was not the commandment of God. They knew it. And so for him to come back with that, oh, that is a huge accusation. But he goes into some of the things that were popular at that time that were being done. That was against God's law. So. Uh, that word there, commandment though, is the same one used, antolae. So Matthew, chapter 19. And someone came to him, uh, I'm sorry, starting at verse 16. "And someone came to him and said, 'Teacher, what good thing shall I do that I may obtain eternal life?' He said, 'Wait a year. I got this covered.'" Just kidding. It would have been perfect, right? That would have been great right there. But it's not what he said. So, "And he said to him, 'Why are you asking me about what is good? There is only one who is good. But if you wish to enter into life, keep the commandments.'" We'll get into verse 18 in just a second. But the whole idea here, okay? The commandment, keeping the commandments is not a lack of faith. It's the greatest step of faith, right? In the same way that you sacrifice of yourselves in obeying God, the things by, by faith, you are avoiding sin. Does that make sense? Giving up a portion of your income, devoting it to the work of the Lord, to further the gospel, to take care of the poor, you do those things on faith. Right? Them in Jesus's time, in the Old Testament, by taking an animal from their flock and sacrificing it on the altar. I mean, I think we're far enough removed from it that we can be like, that's ridiculous. What does that even do? Well, in God's law, it talks about what it does. That's faith. They were believing that in God's word, like this, these are the things that God commanded. These are the things that God wanted done, the things that pleased God, and they were willing to take, which was a large portion of their livelihood, way more than 10%. And to watch it get killed, processed, and roasted. And to enjoy a portion of it, but they're also watching these priests eat of it and everything else. And to think that it had a spiritual principle to it, a spiritual effect that was completely unseen to them. That's faith. In the same way that when we pray, we believe, we know that we're being heard. We believe in faith that Jesus is interceding on our behalf to the Father. So just because these are physical acts, they're still spiritual acts. Little bit of a tangent there, but it's worth noting. All right. So next, Matthew, chapter 22. Verse 36. "Teacher, which is the greatest commandment in the law?" "And he said to him, 'You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your mind.'" This comes from Deuteronomy 6:5. Also, we definitely see that Jesus had a high reverence for the law, including Deuteronomy, which during the temptation, Jesus quotes from Deuteronomy three times. Satan quotes from Psalms a couple of times, but we'll, that's neither here nor there. So this is the greatest and foremost commandment. So Deuteronomy 6:5. Right? He's not quoting from Exodus 20. "The second is like it. You shall love your neighbor as yourself." Does anybody think that that comes in a top 10 list? Nope. That's from Leviticus 19. And you're like, can anything good come out of Leviticus? Yes, the second greatest commandment. Jesus said so, and you can't argue with that. So. So just to think about, what is the greatest commandment? So it's that same word. So if you thought it only applied to the 10, this is how broad it actually is. He's quoting from Deuteronomy 6 and then from Leviticus 19. So once again, just kind of dispelling something where anytime you see commandments, you're only thinking the top 10. All right. Any questions so far? Oh, and then verse 40, "On these two commandments depend the whole law and the prophets." Uh, which a fun little exercise is to take those, love God, love your neighbor, and just kind of like, just divide each of the laws found in the Torah, and they totally, I mean, it's either for God or it's for others. It's that vertical relationship. It's the horizontal relationship. So. All right. I got 17 pages of this, guys. We got, we're not going to go through all of them. But I just want to get this across that like, in case you've read through and got to Galatians and just kind of checked a box of like, oh, law bad, Jesus good, and then went on from there in your theological understanding, I want to challenge this. And I would love to do an extended study on Galatians because the things that Paul is talking about, namely circumcision, is all tradition. Circumcision in of itself is not tradition, but the theological implications of it or around it that developed was all tradition. And that's what Paul had to deal with in Galatia. That's what Paul and Barnabas and them are going back to Jerusalem to be like, hey, guys, are we all on the same page here? And the Jerusalem council ruled in that way. That circumcision was not required for salvation. Why was it a question in the first place? Because it's all a matter of identity. What puts you inside the circle? Because for the Israelites, the idea was, one, you had circumcision because that goes all the way back to Abraham and being a set apart people. But then after Sinai, you have all of these other commands too. And that kept them separate from the rest of the world. Now, what Paul was dealing with was, okay, you get a bunch of Gentiles who definitely weren't circumcised eight days. What does it mean for them to be God's people? Because they are the very definition of the world. All those poor guys, they're getting told what they have to do to make it in to be God's people. And Paul is standing on the foundation of Christ's atoning work. That is what brings you in to being God's people. But are we to understand that that's it? Once you just, you're just in the circle and that's it? Do you continue living like the world? Over and over throughout the New Testament, we're told not to live that way. Well, then how do we know the difference? This, this is the answer that we're unpacking. So. Moving on here. Let's see. Where do we want to go from here? So because I'm not going to read all of them. Little bit of redundancy in the Gospels when it comes to a lot of these verses. Uh, Paul has a lot to say on the law. So. Um, let's go to John 15 first. Now, let me also be very clear before we read this. In no way should we understand this as being Jewish. I just want to be super clear on that. When we're talking about God's commands, commandments, we're looking at the first five books of the Bible. We're staying within God's word. Being Jewish is not the same thing. And it goes right back to all those discussions or interactions between Jesus and the Pharisees. Now add 2,000 years without a sacrificial system, and you've got entire encyclopedias of traditions, tradition, rabbinic laws added to God's word. So being Jewish has absolutely zero to do with any of this. Clear enough? Offensive? Good. All right. So not good being offensive. There were some head nods. Okay. Let's move on. So John 15. All right. "My Father is glorified by this, that you bear much fruit, and so prove to be my disciples." Verse nine, "Just as the Father has loved me, I also loved you. Abide in my love. If you keep my commandments, you will abide in my love, just as I have kept my Father's commandments and abide in his love. These things I have spoken to you, so that my joy may be in you, and that your joy may be made full." This is the exciting part, okay? Because a lot of times we throw out the baby with the bathwater. So the Father has commandments. That's what we've already been talking about. The Messiah, the Son of God, has commandments too. And a lot of those are getting to the heart and motivation and even application of the Father's commandments. So when we are following the Son, when we're obeying His commands, it's not at odds with the Father's commands. All right, let's see. So the, uh, to be made full in verse 11 there is the same word as what we read in Matthew 5. So to fulfill, right? It's to be made full, like full to overflowing. Ah, that's beautiful. Thanks, David. Overflow. There you go. Good. Yeah. Let's go to Romans 7. "What shall we say then? Is the law sin? May it never be. On the contrary, I would not have come to know sin except through the law." Oh, verse seven, chapter seven, verse seven. Sorry. Yeah. Getting excited here. Oh, my bad. "What shall we say then? Is the law sin? May it never be. On the contrary, I would not have come to know sin except through the law. For I would not have known about coveting if the law had not said, 'You shall not covet.' But sin, taking opportunity through the commandment, produced in me coveting of every kind, for apart from the law, sin is dead." Now, a lot of people interpret this as like, basically Paul doing away with the law as you read on. I think that would be slandering Paul. Because remember what I said about false prophets?
It's a little confusing.
Romans is because he's writing as a Pharisee. Sure. If I had a big red button and I put it in the middle of my living room and just told the kids, don't touch it, what are they going to want to do absolutely every day of their life, so long as they live in that home? They're going to want to touch that button, just see what happens. You know, it is almost like in our nature, right? Because we're fallen. Don't do this. Well, now I want to do that. Like, that's just a natural part of who we are. But that's what we have to fight against. And I mean, even so, for what Paul's talking about there, you shall not covet. What is covetousness? It's that envy. It's that desire for something that we don't have. And God calls that out. Don't covet what your neighbor has. Well, tell me I can't want what they have? Well, I think I'm going to want it even more now. It's a double wrong. So, but Paul's addressing this because it's a heart condition. And hopefully, that is what we are giving over to the Lord for the Spirit to work within our hearts. This goes back to the definition of the new covenant. So then the law is holy. This is Romans 7, verse 12. "And the commandment is holy and righteous and good." So Paul agrees. Good. Then we get a few in 1 Corinthians, Ephesians, Colossians, 1 Timothy, Titus, Hebrews, 2 Peter, 1 John. Let's go to 1 John, chapter 2, which Adam read today, this morning. 1 John, chapter 2. Verse 3. "By this we know that we have come to know Him, if we keep his commandments. The one who says, 'I have come to know him,' and does not keep his commandments, is a liar, and the truth is not in him. Whoever keeps his word in him, the love of God has truly been perfected by this. We know that we are in him. The one who says, 'He abides in him himself, to walk in the same manner as...'" to walk in the same manner as he walked." What would Jesus do, right? So, um, there's quite a few other times in 1 John that, chapter 3, chapter 4, chapter 5, even in 2 John quite a bit, where John is talking about keeping the commandments. So, definitely a reoccurring theme. And then we get into Revelation 12:17 and Revelation 14:12. So, any questions on any of those? What we were trying to do is establish, one, how this word is used elsewhere in the New Testament, just to show that it's not just, one, the Ten Commandments, but all of the law. And then to see how this word is used in reference to. And maybe what might be a cultural misnomer, it's not negative. When we actually read these verses in context, it's not negative, it's not bad. The law is not evil, it's not bad. It's the same first five books that you've always had a part of your Bible. So, it's not taboo, it's not, you know, any... So, it is the very definition of what God has provided for His people to connect with Him. So, let's go back to Exodus, chapter 20. So, just for fun little illustration here, we have God's people in Egypt, and He calls them out, right? He liberates them, brings them into the wilderness, right? And mind you, they had just been in slavery for 400 years as a people. That's a long time. There's not a lot of identity left there. So, He brings them out, and just as He had said to Moses that you are going to bring them, you're going to lead them back to this mountain. So, when Moses was in the wilderness, that's when Yahweh revealed Himself to Moses, and sent him on the mission back into Egypt. So, Moses leads them through the Red Sea, into the wilderness. They come to the base of Mount Sinai. And this is where God gives them the law. The whole idea, the whole point of this is that these laws are a vehicle of connection, of relationship with God. "Be holy, for I am holy." That's the whole idea. Remember all those stories where the people of God could not come into His presence, and if they had in a, with sin, with, by doing it in a rebellious, disobedient way, by breaking those laws, well, it didn't end well for them, did it? And a lot of times, when they let sin enter into the camp, there was all kinds of things that were happening because God was there. And God cannot allow that level of sin and rebellion in His presence. That's the story of Numbers, of them going through the wilderness. "Be holy, for I am holy." The law is opportunity for connection. It is to be in the presence of God. So, people have always viewed God's law as His grace, because God didn't have to do any of this. He didn't have to reveal the things that pleased Him, the things that would honor and glorify Him. This is a glimpse of His own, like ethical perspective on reality. This is the definition of right and wrong according to God. And in my mind, when the kingdom is manifested here on earth with Him here in our presence, I couldn't imagine Him coming up with a different set of rules. I think this is, this is the foreshadowing, but it's also the it for what will be. This also kind of informs how we read the latter chapters of Isaiah, and Zechariah and Zephaniah, when it talks about celebrating the feast of tabernacles in His presence. Well, we're Gentiles. We don't have to do that. Well, if you want to know how to celebrate the feast of tabernacles, which is a good time to read up on it, go to Leviticus 23. Ah, there's Leviticus again. And it's all a matter of opportunity. God has created a way for us to represent Him to the world. If we looked just like the world, if we had the ethics of the world, all the practices of the world, what are we saying about God? What are we saying about Jesus? If we lived in all the same sinful ways as they did, but we're called to live differently. And let me also just say, for an ever-changing society, this is the anchor point of our faith from history and into the future. So, when we read this, this is a picture of God's character. These are the, these are the instructions to the game of life, according to the Creator, the Maker of all that we see, and for, as it has, as His image bearers put into this world. But it takes, the problem here is that people can't hear this without thinking it challenges in some way the sacrifice of Jesus Christ. It doesn't, it doesn't touch that. Like, the author of Hebrews captures it so well. Like, this isn't something where we have to offer the yearly, you know, day of atonement sacrifice. This isn't something where, you know, much like the Passover lamb for the Israelites in Egypt? That was one time. They didn't go back to Egypt every year and do that again. I don't think Egypt would have appreciated that. It's like insult to injury, right? Hey, we're back. Don't touch us, you know? Or the, or the same thing will happen again, you know? Like, it was one time. And in the same way, the sacrifice of Jesus, the Lamb of God, one time, boom, liberated for the lifetime. Like, that's the beautiful part of it. But this is, this is like, okay, and now what? Right? We are living out our salvation. We're living out our redemption, and we're to do that in a saved way, in a redeemed way. Not like the unredeemed, not like those who have rejected the sacrifice of Christ. That, this is where this picks up. But for so long, people have seen this as a challenge to the sacrifice of Christ. You cannot earn your salvation. And for all of us who have received the gospel, you're already saved. The beautiful part here is in obeying God's Word, it saves us from the troubles of the world. Just think back to your life before Christ, and what was all the trouble that you brought onto yourself by rejecting God's Word? This is us living saved. He gave us the cheat code to life to live in faith by these things. Even the things that we just don't necessarily understand, the things that maybe seem a little weird. Those are the things that we live in faith. Yeah, so how does legalism tie into this? So, two things, because I have thoughts on this. One, when we get away from God's law, we've created a vacuum because we love, we love rules. There's either the people that love making them, or the people that need them. And there is not a shortage of people who want to make rules for other people. Or to create those identifiers as we're together, so we're all going to dress the same way, or women are going to dress this way, and men are going to dress this way. When we get away from God's law, boom, it's wide open. When we are anchored to God's law, we see what it says, but we also know what it doesn't say. And we know that nobody else has the authority to command us to do something, and especially if it's contrary to what God's Word already says. So, that's a thing, right? And that's what we've seen a lot of times in Christian culture. All kinds of rules made up, and it has nothing to do with God's Word. And just to understand, God could have said, like, God could have given instructions that took up volumes, that took up libraries, but He didn't. These are the things that He said, and everything else is the stuff that He didn't say. So, obviously, this is the stuff He cared about. These are the cultural identifiers that He wanted for His people. That's liberating. It takes all the guesswork out. Instead of thinking that everything that you do is sin, God gave you the instructions. He tells you what is and what isn't. That's liberating. You don't have to carry a theological burden thinking that everything you do, you just sitting there, breathing, is a sin. It's not. That's, that's refreshing. And that He's called us to live, and, but that's, that's a version of legalism that theologically we impose upon ourselves even. But it's also understanding the role of the Holy Spirit, the role within a fellowship, and understanding how these commands apply to our lives. Let the Holy Spirit do that. Like, you can read, you can talk to somebody about, you know, context or whatever. What did that look like back then? How did that separate them from the culture around them? But, you know, leave that between you and the Lord. I mean, this isn't a Catholic jab, we don't have a Pope. We have Christ. Go to the Lord on these things. And you might be surprised at maybe how He's leading you to understand how to live this out, and maybe how at odds it is with the culture around us. And then you'll be confronted with maybe a crisis of belief, and what does a step of faith look like? And in this way, we're going to become known as His followers. That's exciting. And what does that look like? And, you know, and mind you, you know, us growing up and living in a Judeo-Christian society, well, what happens when it stops being one? Well, this is a huge opportunity. Because all of a sudden, we get to see what's culture and what really God's Word says. And you get to see who's really reading their Bibles and who's not. Sorry, that was a little sharp. But the challenge is there. So, you know, and, so it's not a matter of being afraid of legalism. Legalism is bad, right? But nobody, nobody accuses you of being a legalist if you're going the speed limit. Right? Nobody, I mean, don't even accuse the police of being legalist. Quit being such a legalist. I have freedom. Nobody says that. Like, we know the laws, right? Now, the IRS, that's a different matter, but, and it's that time of year again, so. But, you know, for all of those things, like, it's, the law is not bad, right? It's an opportunity, it's a vehicle for understanding the Lord, for following Jesus. It's just all of those things. And when you actually read it, it's not as nitpicky. It's not as overwhelming as what you might think it is. Is it different than maybe what our culture usually, you know, depicts? Yes, absolutely. I mean, for instance, you know, some, the feast, right? The feast are very different than what most American holidays are. Now, granted, there's still a lot of food, so that's, that's a win, right? But, you know, when we see these things, and we see the deeper meaning, and we see them throughout Scripture, ah, they're beautiful. All the meaning comes out, and they all point to Jesus. It's so awesome. I mean, even Sabbath, a day of rest, right? Maybe, you know, some of you remember that, the, you know, Sunday and a lot of the, the blue laws and everything else, and, you know, nothing was open on a Sunday, and that was your day to, to rest, or, you know, whatever, it's, you know, that's pretty close. When you go to Israel, and like, man, everything's shut down. So, it's a, I mean, it's, it's different. But you also recognize the blessing in Him too. So, now, all that said, any, any other questions or comments? Should get back to that, yeah. Yeah, but, you know, and it's something that, you know, we can facilitate in our own lives. Like that, and that's, there's the beautiful part of it. Like, there, there's this point where, you know, that pendulum swings, and, you know, and, like, if, if it's a part of culture and everybody's doing it, well, there's a lot of times where we just are following with it, just going with the flow. But for us to read God's Word, and to step out on faith, and to live these things out, to practice them when nobody else is, there's a special blessing in that. It's not a matter of elitism or anything like that. It's just that sincere, like, man, just trying to do this. You know, when you're telling, you know, somebody, your boss, that like, hey, I don't work on Saturdays. I don't work from Friday evening to Saturday evening. You know, different things, like, I just want to honor God's Word. Man, so, it's a, it's different. It really is. But it would be cool to get back to that. So, alright, so Exodus, chapter 20. "Then God spoke all these words, saying, 'I am Yahweh your God, who brought you out of the land of Egypt, out of the house of slavery. You shall have no other gods before Me. You shall not make for yourself an idol, or any likeness of what is in heaven above, or on the earth beneath, or in the water under the earth. You shall not worship them or serve them; for I, Yahweh your God, am a jealous God, visiting the iniquity of the fathers on the children, on the third and fourth generations of those who hate Me, but showing loving kindness to thousands, to those who love Me, and keep My commandments. You shall not take the name of Yahweh your God in vain; for Yahweh will not leave him unpunished, who takes his name in vain. Remember the Sabbath day, to keep it holy. Six days you shall labor and do all your work; but the seventh day is the Sabbath of Yahweh your God in it; you shall not do any work, you or your son or your daughter, your male or female servant, or your cattle, or your sojourner, who stays with you. For in six days Yahweh made the heavens and the earth, the sea, and all that is in them, and rested on the seventh day; therefore Yahweh blessed the Sabbath day, and made it holy.'" Which is cool, like, we're just reading this, and it goes back to creation. So, by doing that, you're recognizing the way in which God made everything. "Honor your Father and your Mother, that your days may be prolonged in the land which Yahweh your God gives you. You shall not commit murder; you shall not commit..." You shall not commit adultery. You shall not steal. You shall not bear false witness against your neighbor. You shall not covet your neighbor's house, you shall not covet, covet your neighbor's wife, or his male servant, or his female servant, or his ox, or his donkey, or anything that belongs to your neighbor. That's the one Paul had a hard time with. It was a joke, come on. Romans 7, remember, we just read. "All the people perceived the thunder and lightning flashes, and the sound of the trumpet and the mountains smoking. And when the people saw it, they trembled and stood at a distance." So. So then he goes on, and there's all kinds of commands. And a lot of them, I mean, this is, love God, love your neighbor. Right? And you can already kind of see that division coming up. And a lot of these, now, remember, this is a society that they're, they're coming out of Egypt. Who's in charge? Oh, you got Moses, his brother and his sister. What happens when they die? You got tribal heads, elders, right? And so, how does, what are, what are the rules for this tribe? So God gives them the rules for their society. And if you're ever thinking like, well, you know, moral law, civil law, ceremonial, anybody ever heard that division? That was completely created about 500 years ago. When you read the commands, it's not that neat. Because some of the ones that you think might be moral or ceremonial, I mean, they just all blend together, there's no order within those throughout the Torah, throughout the first five books. So, now, just keep in view here. The whole reason we're talking about this is it came up here in Revelation 14, as well as Revelation 12. And John is encouraging these who continue to obey the commandments and hold to the testimony of Jesus. Right? So even when a beast appears, even when the evil and wicked government who's making everybody take a mark so that they can continue on in society, He's encouraging them to stay strong. To hold to the commandments of God and the testimony of Jesus. So let's keep that in view. So the purpose of the law. Does anybody have? Deuteronomy 6. So I wanna read the first couple verses. "Now this is the commandment, the statutes and the judgments, which Yahweh your God has commanded me to teach you, that you might do them in the land where you are going over to possess it, so that you and your son, and your grandson might fear Yahweh your God, to keep all his statutes and his commandments, which I command you all the days of your life, and that your days may be prolonged." Now, jumping to the end of this chapter, there is a kind of like a Q and A. Starting at verse 20, "When your son asks you in time to come, saying, 'What do these testimonies and the statutes and the judgments mean, which Yahweh our God commanded you? Then you shall say to your son, 'We were slaves to Pharaoh in Egypt, and Yahweh brought us from Egypt with a mighty hand. Moreover Yahweh showed great and distressing signs and wonders before our eyes against Egypt, Pharaoh and all his household. He brought us out from there in order to bring us in, to give us the land which he had sworn to our fathers. So Yahweh commanded us to observe all these statutes, to fear Yahweh our God, for our good always, and for our survival, as it is today. It will be righteousness for us if we are careful to observe all this commandment before Yahweh our God, just as he commanded us.'" So that word righteous there, nowhere in Scripture does righteous mean perfect. When you see righteous, or righteousness, think right relationship. Okay? Think of any relationship that you are in with somebody else. There's rules to every relationship. If you don't think so, break some of them. See how that relationship's going, right? There's rules. Many are spoken, many are not. They should all be spoken. Just to be clear. So, but it's one of those things that it's being in right relationship with them. So think of like, keeping those rules, that mental checklist, the emotional checklist, the, all of those things, right? That is being in right relationship with them. That can be perceived as a righteous relationship. Think of that in relation to God. Think of it as the obedience that we keep is entertaining His presence. When we are being in relationship with somebody else, and we are loving them and caring for them, meeting all of those needs, right? There's a connection there, there's a drawing close. It's exactly what we see with the Father. It's exactly how He has designed us to live these things out. Because when we live them, when we do this, when we obey in faith, we are identifying that much closer with Him. And remember, who did it perfectly? Jesus. And that's what it means to follow Him. And when we can do this in all of these little things, those big things fall right in line. So, alright. There you go. Now, does anybody have any questions in these last 15 minutes? I have spared you many, many verses. But I do have one more. Jeremiah 31. Oh, yeah, Mary.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll get you next.
Okay, alright. Jeremiah 31, verse 33. Backing up just a little bit here to Jeremiah 31, verse 31. "Behold, days are coming, declares Yahweh, when I will make a new covenant." That could also mean renewed covenant with the house of Israel and with the house of Judah. So I think when we were in chapter 12, we actually went through the idea of, or, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, it was in chapter 12. We were talking about Paul's perspective on church, on Israel. Right? Revelation, or Romans 11, 8 through 11, and Ephesians 2. So just kind of keep that in mind. "Not like the covenant which I made with their fathers, in the day I took them by the hand to bring them out of the land of Egypt, my covenant which they broke, although I was a husband to them, declares Yahweh. But this is the covenant, which I will make with the house of Israel after those days, declares Yahweh, I will put my law within them and on their heart. I will write it, and I will be their God, and they shall be my people." So, now, we'll read the next verse here in a second. So many people see the fulfillment of this as the Holy Spirit. Those laws being put on the heart. They're not done away with. But what we're talking about here is having the indwelling of the Holy Spirit giving us the guidance in how to obey God's word. What does that look like in the context of our lives? I think we already experienced that, right? When we listen to the Holy Spirit of the, do this, don't do that. Right? If you're not hearing that voice, just pray, just ask, where's the sin in my life? It'll come up. That's not, odds are, you're not gonna feel like, that's not me bringing that up. And so as that comes up, you can recognize, like, oh, that's the voice of the Holy Spirit. It works the other way too. As you're reading God's word, how can I live this out in my life? How can I obey the Lord in these things? Now, the next verses are interesting. Verse 34, "They will not teach again each man his neighbor, and each man his brother, saying, 'Know Yahweh, for they will all know Me.' For from the least of them to the greatest of them, declares Yahweh, for I will forgive their iniquity and their sin, I will remember no more. Thus says Yahweh, who gives the sun for light by day," most days, just kidding, every day. Just, just when the moon gets in the way. "And the fixed order of the moon and the stars for light by night, who stirs up the sea so that its waves roar, Yahweh of host, Yahweh Shavu' is His name. If this fixed order departs from before Me, declares Yahweh, then the offspring of Israel also will cease, from being a nation before Me forever." So, ah, goes on and on. So beautiful words, right? The thing is, when we, we are still teaching one another, we are still sharing who Yahweh is with the world around us, right? So there's many times, prophetically, when we read through, there'll be parts of fulfillment, and then parts unfulfilled. So, that's kind of a fun one to get into, but this is where we get the idea of the new covenant.
Any sense in that?
This is, yeah, 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 this is the beauty of, one, God's word. Like, when I talk about it being an anchor point, it is. It prevents us from just getting too far out there. Right? Because that's because plenty of people do confuse the Holy Spirit with, I really wanna do this. And just coming up with all kinds of spiritual justification for it. Right? And to that, here's kind of the thought that I have in order with this. So we have the commandments, right? Then, we take in what Jesus has said. Because He talks about a lot of the commandments. And when He's not necessarily talking about them directly, He's talking about a heart or motivation in our obedience. So this isn't just, like, you're not just obeying it to be saved. Right? Which was really kind of a Jewish idea. I say that, and that's not right on the face of it, because them being born Jewish, they were already saved. Right? So that, that was, that's a thing. And that's kind of what Paul's addressing with Galatians and all that. But they still had the idea of avoiding apostasy. And by doing that, obedience was like mandatory. And the rabbis and all those. But Jesus talks a lot about the different commandments, and about our heart and condition before the Father in obeying Him. Right? There, that's where the rebuking of the Pharisees come in. That's where, oh, you're gonna ignore this poor person, or this sick person, or somebody in, who is down on their luck, right? Or having a hard time of life, so that you can just continue to walk around in your long-flowing robes, praying very loudly. Jesus is like, whoa, hey, that, you're missing, you're missing a lot. And when you read the Torah, you see how much taking care of the poor comes up repeatedly. Loving and taking care of the foreigner, and all kinds of people. It all comes up in there. So that's where Jesus is highlighting some things. The prophets do the same. Right? So once again, Scripture is pointing and emphasizing these things. If they got left out, if they got forgotten in the first century, odds are, we forgot them today. So when you read the New Testament, read it through that lens. So then, what we have is a direct translation into our immediate life. What does that command, running through the filter of what Jesus has said, now running through the filter of the Holy Spirit, what does that look like in my immediate context? My immediate context is not your immediate context. That's the beauty of this. This is tailor fit. And this is how the Father is wanting to see this lived out in my life. Like, that's the beauty. And so you got this nice little funnel here that is pointing right to it. And now, you know, there's also different understandings where we're talking to people, and it's like, hey, what was the original context of this? You know, there's something about like, you know, not eating a kid, a baby goat in its mother's milk. Like boiling it and consuming it. What is that about? Oh, well, you know, that was known to the, in the ancient Near East, that was a pagan fertility practice, da-da-da, all this other stuff. It also kind of speaks to cycles of life. Different things like that. Oh, okay, well, okay, do we need to be more sensitive as a people of what kind of pagan practices have crept into our faith? And practice? I wasn't going that far. But, you know, when we read those weird ones, and we understand that context, what does that look like today? And we can take that to the Father, we can pray about that, listen to the Holy Spirit, and then take that step of faith. Right? And we can do that without beating everybody else up. Because they're not where we're at. So that's the beautiful part of this, is that we're just kind of seeking this understanding. And pretty soon, you know, when more people are doing it, you have this collective understanding, where everybody can talk through that. And then, there's a lot of the commands that you can see within a group format versus the individual or the family. So it just kind of, ah, the blessing just kind of multiplies from there. So does that help answer that question? Because, and and I say this because all the unspoken stuff, it doesn't exist. Right? Or it doesn't exist in the fact that we have these original contexts. And if we're missing our context, that's right. So once again, we're taking the, really, the things that Jesus talked about, the heart, the motivation, and we're kind of circling back around, what was the heart and motivation of the commandment? And what does that look like today? And that's how we prevent legalism. Is because there's a spirit of really just wanting to worship the Lord with our lives. And nobody's beating each other up over stuff, right? I mean, we just love to do that for the cultural things. The things on the surface today. So, and, you know, and we're a community church, so we got a lot more grace about that. Because we don't have our own nitpicking, you know, the, the, our own cultural things that we've created ourselves. You know, we didn't, we're not like, calling each other out for not wearing a suit here. Or for not wearing a dress, or a nice hat, or something like that on Sunday morning. So, we've gotten away from that. So we have, we've recognized some of that liberty, because, well, that's not in there at all. So what other ways are there? But at what point have we thrown the baby out with the bathwater? So, yeah. So, Acts 15. Paul and Barnabas are out ministering throughout the Mediterranean, right? But then, they're coming up with the, against these Pharisees or Judaizers, right? Who are going behind them and saying, telling these Gentiles, hey, you're not really saved until you get circumcised and obey the law of Moses. Right? Now, a lot of times, there's differing understandings of that, when they talk about the law of Moses here. Because in some instances, like Galatians, what it's pointing to is all the rabbinic laws. is all the rabbinic laws. Especially if it was a certain group that had circumcised you. It's like, it's like a gang. Right? You're getting initiated into this group with its own turf and rules and everything else. It was kind of the same way. And so, here, there were some very serious questions. Because these people are coming up behind Paul and Barnabas as they're sharing the gospel, as they are baptizing, and these people are saved, they're telling them that they're saved, then they're bouncing to the next city, and then somebody's coming up behind them and saying, you're not saved yet. And the whole thing of circumcision. So some people were very upset about this. Especially the ones that underwent it. So, so, so they go back to Jerusalem, and they're asking, they're like, hey, what, what are we doing here? So they're talking to Peter, they're talking to James and John, all the apostles are there. They're like, like, have we run the race in vain? So, Peter stands up and he's talking about how God had revealed to him the ability to go to the Gentiles and share the gospel. Right? Remember the vision of the sheet being let down? Had nothing to do with pork chops, but had everything to do with the ability to go to the Gentiles. That's how Peter interprets it three times throughout the New Testament. And that's a big deal. And here, the judgment that they give. After they had stopped speaking, James answered, saying, brethren, listen to me, Simon, or Simeon, has related how God first concerned himself about taking from among the Gentiles a people for his name. With this, in the words of the prophets, agree, just as is written, after these things, I will return, I will rebuild the tabernacle of David, which has fallen, and I will rebuild its ruins, and I will restore it, so that the rest of mankind may seek Yahweh. And all the Gentiles who are called by my name, says Yahweh, who makes these things known from long ago. Therefore it is my judgment that we do not trouble those who are turning to God from among the Gentiles. So to trouble is to just bring that level of consternation, right? Like, to upset them. The law itself is not trouble, it's the issue here, like, you're not saved, uh-oh. Therefore it is my judgment that we do not trouble those who are turning to God from among the Gentiles, but that we write to them that they abstain from things contaminated by idols. Okay? That's food, that's a dietary law, congratulations. And from fornication, and from what is strangled, oh, dietary, and from blood. Well, that seems pretty weird, right? All of those things have to do with pagan worship, with pagan temples. You know, the thing that they grew up doing and going to temple, their own pagan temple on a weekly basis, since they were little. The thing that they were used to, the thing that, that's where they went and bought meat, that was the butcher that they went to. Because those animals were sacrificed to those gods, and then sold for profit. Those were the things that the Jerusalem council had said, you know what? You need, and each of those can be found in the Torah, by the way. James didn't just make those up. He was like, these are going to be the most important and most pressing things to separate you from pagan society. Because you cannot proclaim to be a Christ follower and continue going to the temple of Dionysius, or Zeus, or Apollos, or any of those other gods, because you will profane the name of the Lord. That's what Acts 15 is all about. It is separating them from that immediate pagan context of their culture. And then, it says, for Moses, from ancient generations, has in every city those who preach him, since he is read in the synagogues every Sabbath. Why would James say that? Oh, here's your primer, here's your intro into the faith, right? Because we're not just starting you on Leviticus. I mean, how, seriously. Anybody that just got baptized last Sunday, Monday morning, and be like, hey, you ready for a Leviticus school? Let's do this. You need to know all of this by the end of the week. No way, we don't do that, that's not our discipleship, they didn't even do that back then. But James is recognizing, for further learning, for further education, go to synagogue, and you get to hear the Torah. Because, you know, not everybody got to walk around with a Bible. Oh, look at the time. No, so I will say, this is, that is the one point that we see Paul making a cultural context, contextual call for those in Corinth. And James is issuing something that is for the Gentiles of the places that they had already been. Paul was speaking into an immediate context, he, we trust that he knows that better. Is that something that they were starting? And mind you, what Paul is talking about there is an issue of conscience. Because remember, if they, somebody reveals that this was offered to a certain deity, if you're inflicted by your conscience, then stop. Right? And, so Paul, hear me out here, Paul comes off a little bit more liberal in this one.
But Paul was also,
But Paul was a conservative's conservative.
Paul was also, basically, the point was, you're, you might be able to convert this person.
Right.
It'd be like if you went to a Jewish house.
Paul was erring on the side of relationship.
And they didn't eat pork chops, and we're looking forward to pork chops.
Because Paul really, I don't even know where to go with that one. So, but, but still, it's, yeah, Paul was erring on the side of relationship and conscience. And, in the spirit of mission, and the spirit of ministry, and sharing the gospel. And so what James, and what the edict that they're issuing in Acts 15 is a call out from their pagan culture and background. So, and it's the same thing that we would do today. Uh, if somebody came to Christ, and we're saying, hey, all those people that you did drugs with, ah, you might want to put a little space there, or don't go hang out with them at midnight. Right? Go and share the gospel, I'll go with you. But we're leaving in 30 minutes. So, or whatever it might be, right? Or, you know, people you drink with, or whatever, right? Bad relationship. There's all those things that within your own context, we'd immediately come out of. Honestly, for those who live in a communist country, it might be renouncing the worship of the state. So there's all kinds of things like that in so many different contexts, that, you know, what would, and then, that's the fun discussion. When we start reading this, and we look at it as like having this binding element, it's like, okay, what's the, what's the Jesus motivation here, what's the heart behind it? What is, how does the Holy Spirit translate that? What does that look like in our context? What does it look like in their context? And to really think critically about how we're living our lives for the glory of God. How are we living as a called-out people?